Get started, I want to welcome everybody to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 3rd, 2022. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Fleming to do the invocation and the pledge.
Father, we come again in your name, thank you for all your blessings, that you restored our fathers, I thank you, Father, now you brought us to this place again, we praise you, blessed to take care of county business as you seek fit, watching protect these commissioners today, county staff, but we know that you've got powers in your hand, we thank you for the improvement that have been made, pray that you look over our community today, look in this audience today, how merciful, we need you, we need your guidance, we need your strength, your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father, we ask thee the minimal blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with approval of the minutes for the April 19th, 2022 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or motion for approval? I think Mr. Eric said we had a correction to make.
Mr. Chairman, on page 375, half way down, item 15, other comments and concerns. Mr. Klepper's paragraph has been changed to state he discusses opinion on the number and types of towers, instead of suggesting one large tower instead of several small ones. So, I want to point that out to those in the public who might not have seen that yet.
Without a correction, do I have a motion to approve?
Chairman, I'll motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming, second, and by Commissioner Landall, in favor of item, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to the consent agenda, we're going to pull item number 10 for discussion. So, I have items 2 through 9 and 11. Any discussion or a motion for approval?
Chairman, I'll put a motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second, by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor of item, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 10, award bid and authorized county administrator since when a quarter with ring power for eight motor graders for public works. Mr. Landall.
Um, it's going to take a lot of discussion here, because I think we're all at three, four, five different opinions. Do we, do we have a time specific?
Yes, we do. We want to do, we got to wait until five and five to do.
Um, is there anything else that we can go to, that we can, I mean, I think we all got, we will all have some input on the motor graders, whether we can talk about.
Well, let's do, skip over to item number 14, discuss the possible board action appointments to affordable housing advisory committee, and that is for the ship program. As I understand that we were getting more money, so now we had to appoint an advisory board, and one commissioner has to sit on that board. So, do I have any volunteers, or y'all just want me to throw a dog?
Are you left-handed?
Of course you are, today only.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm surprised I knew that word.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak up, I'll do my duties.
We appreciate that, Mr. Stapleton.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Stapleton.
Everybody can breathe again.
According to my watch, it's 5:05.
Looking at her shoes.
It's 5:05, so at 5:05 or soon thereafter, this is item number 12, for the folks out there. At 5:05 or sooner thereafter, it's a matter to be heard on a public hearing to consider the adoption of resolution approving special permit request number SP 22-04-01 by Ignite Wireless Authorized Agent for Property Owner CSX Transportation to be granted special permit under section 14.11 of Swanee County Land Development Regulations for an essential service. Mr. Meeks.
Okay, at this time, if anybody anticipates that they will be giving testimony before the board this evening, would you stand to be sworn? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help the God. Okay, if you would please, whenever you approach the podium, please state your name and address clearly for the record.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I don't have anything else to add. The file was placed into the record at the previous board county commission meeting, and the meeting was continued. We, at this point in time, have not had any additional documentation submitted to our office pertinent to the request. So, I will turn it back over to the applicants to provide the additional data that the board had requested.
Can I ask you a question before you move? As far as the land development regulations goes, is there any reason in those regulations for that tower that the county would have to not approve?
I think there's, there's, there's language in there all, with, with any type of special permit, that the board has the privilege to, to look at the scale of need for anything. You know what I mean? And I understand sometimes the, the situations exist where you may have multiple towers to be constructed in close proximity to each other. But I think on a case-by-case scenario, the differences between those may be different. So, ultimately, it lies back with the board, you know, to kind of look at the scale of need for the community, and if the tower is being constructed to be an addition to services, or to create a, you know, a service where there may be a deficiency, the board has the authority to approve it. But then the, the, the scale of need goes back to the board, you know, looking at the impact of the proposed use upon living conditions in the area, the impact on the property. There's several things that the, the board could look at, and one of those things is, you know, the scale of need, you know, for the, for the, for the county, for the whole.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that. I'm sorry, is there any more questions than Mr. Meeks? We'll now open the floor to public comment.
If we could, Mr. Chairman, can we proceed back first to the applicant, to see, just try to keep it applicant, and then go to the public?
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name's Andy, leave it there, right? Last name, Rotten Strike, address 42020th Street North in Birmingham, here on behalf of Ignite Wireless Property Owner CSX. Thank you for allowing us to come back today. Want to remind everybody, this is an application for a tower on CSX property, for use by CSX. The county has an ordinance in place, and the ordinance sets out certain ground rules, and I did not prompt that, by the way. The ordinance sets out certain ground rules. We've met those ground rules, we have not needed and do not need a variance to meet the ordinance here, we meet all the setbacks, we meet all the requirements. Because there is a federal statute in place, we think, I think Ronald's statements may be a little different, I would answer differently. Because cell towers are generally treated differently because of the federal law, if we meet your ordinance that you put in place, that we play by the rules, we think we've satisfied all the characteristics that you're looking for, and that's how we start off. So, if you don't want a tower in this particular area, at this particular height, at this particular setbacks, then change the ordinance. But the rules were there, and we've met them, we think this should be granted. Now, in that regard, you guys have requested some additional information, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring that to you. So, I'm going to hand out, I got some packs for everybody. I think I've got enough.
Thank you, sir.
So, one of the first things you guys asked about was coverage for CSX. So, the first two pages I'm showing you are propagation maps for CSX equipment. The first page, you have a red dot surrounded by orange and yellow on the right side and on the left side. Those are existing CSX towers. In the middle, you have a large white space, that's where there's no CSX coverage. The next page is with this proposed tower turned on, and you can see the difference in coverage, which proves the need for this tower for CSX. So, I wanted to make sure you had that, that was a specific question you asked. The next page, or a group of pages.
Can we, Mr. Andy, if you can identify as you go through, so that I can mark them for the record?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to call the pretty colored one.
So, the one with the...
If you just talked to, I'm going to, call that Exhibit 1.
That's the, Exhibit 1.
Existing. And then following will be coverage.
Yeah, with the proposed tower turned on.
Thank you, sir.
One of the other questions and issues that seemed to occur at the last meeting was the fact that these towers were going to be too close together. What I have for you in your next group of aerial photographs are three examples in Swanee County, where towers are closer than three quarters of a mile apart from each other. Three examples already here. So, this is not a new situation, and not something that we're seeing for the first time today. Again, this is for CSX. The part about AT&amp;T that we brought up, that I, quite frankly, would do differently, is we mentioned AT&amp;T in the application, so that you guys would know that AT&amp;T had approached us about co-locating on this tower. This tower in the application really has nothing to do with the AT&amp;T co-location, it's about the CSX use for that tower. All right? So, all this extra talk about AT&amp;T leaving the SBA tower and coming on is really extra talk that's not relevant to this particular application. But, because it was such an issue, and because we talked about SBA's method of operation across the country, I thought it would be interesting for you guys to see this, which is an opinion from the state of Kentucky, the Public Service Commission. It was issued in February of this year. If you would, turn to page 3.
I'm going to mark this order as Exhibit Number 3.
Okay. It's from the state of Kentucky. So, SBA applied to challenge multiple towers in the state of Kentucky. All cell towers in Kentucky go through the Public Service Commission. This is the opinion of the Public Service Commission in ruling against SBA's opposition. SBA's only interest is to remain AT&amp;T Mobility's landlord, whether by complicating the proceeding, or by engaging in rent negotiations within the proceeding. As the commission noted in another case, in which SBA sought intervention, the commission is under no illusion that SBA's request to intervene in this case is anything other than an attempt to protect its monopoly as the owner of the only tower in the area. Although SBA has advanced additional arguments since the commission's decision in a previous case, SBA's interest remains the same. SBA is a competitor with an interest in keeping tower rents high by limiting the number of towers. This runs counter to one of the stated purpose of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which is federal law, I mentioned, which is to promote competition. And then it cites a Kentucky statute, which states that market-based competition benefits consumers, benefits the citizens of Swanee County. Unreasonable and excessive fees for rent on a tower have the potential to divert resources that could otherwise be used to invest in expanding wireless networks and conducting necessary network upgrades, necessary to meet increased demand for wireless voice and broadband services. And then it goes on to say in this last sentence, unreasonably high rent or onerous conditions render such opportunities unreasonable. So, I want you to see that, so you guys can see that SBA is attempting to do here exactly what they did in Kentucky. And again, not to belabor the AT&amp;T voice that says, I stuck my foot in my mouth, I guess I need to eat the entire shoe. One of the last things you asked for was information where AT&amp;T reached out to SBA to try to negotiate, and you have here a letter from AT&amp;T about this specific site. Now, look, this is going on with thousands of towers across the country, right? AT&amp;T is not trying to negotiate one by one, they want to negotiate them all together. There's been no response to this letter to AT&amp;T. So, here's the letter you asked for about the outreach that AT&amp;T made. Again, we think the AT&amp;T issue is a separate issue, but you asked for that information, I wanted you to have it. So, with that said, we ask for your approval of CSX application to place the tower on CSX property. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Uh, Mr. Andy, I'll do first.
Yes, sir.
Do you know who, who owns these towers on these pictures that you give us?
CSX.
On these, these, all these?
Pictures, I don't, no, sir. I mean, I can look them up, I wanted, wanted to get you guys the mapping, but I can get you some additional information, if you'd like to see it.
I was just curious. Any questions for Andy, for anybody?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I have, I have three exhibits marked. Fourth exhibit, AT&amp;T.
Yes, sir. Are you putting all of the aerial maps with the distances as one exhibit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All called it composite exhibit number 2.
That's fine. And 3 would be the opinion, and 4 is the AT&amp;T letter?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Name and address for...
Ryan Maloney, I'm at the Swanee Independent Drive, Jackson, Florida, here on behalf of SBA. We were here about a month ago, we had, there were some questions asked. I think it's, it's telling, I want to say first, it's telling that this application wasn't amended, wasn't supplemented. None of the stuff that's being presented to you now was ever made available to the public ahead of this meeting. You're being provided unsworn information that purports to show a need for CSX to have this tower. There is literally nothing in the written application before use that supports CSX's need for this tower. I haven't even seen, and I asked for public record request today, I haven't seen any of this information. So, I think just keep that in mind, the way this is being handled. All you have to do is look at the resolution that's in your packet, that you have to make certain findings in order to approve this tower. They're on the first page. They say, whereas, the Board of County Commissioners has determined and found that the need exists for a 266-foot, feet communications tower and associated equipment at this location. Number 2, the location of 266-foot communications tower and associated equipment on the property described below is in the public interest. And then the last one, that the application for a special permit for a 266-foot communications tower and associated equipment on the property described below is in compliance with the provisions of section 14 dot 11 of the county's land development regulation. Again, there's nothing in the actual filed application that relates to any need or any showing as to why CSX needs this tower. You received some things today, there are not any affidavits, there's no evidence from CSX. All you've got is basically things that nobody's seen in this whole room, other than you guys right now, and Mr. Andy. Your code at section 14 dot 11 J requires that the applications include evidence of applicant's inability to co-locate on a reasonable basis on the otherwise suitable existing communications tower to the location of the proposed antenna. Even if you look at what was provided today, and say, well, there's a hole in the zone, that doesn't establish that CSX could not put their equipment on the existing SBA tower that's less than half a mile away from where they want to put this tower. Just really, there's nothing in the application as a CSX, except for what you saw today, which frankly, is not even part of the application. And it's not evident, it's not sworn, it's not an affidavit. The first meeting was all about AT&amp;T and all the problems that AT&amp;T had with SBA, now that's all gone. But if that's going to be the basis for your decision, what's to stop AT&amp;T from the next time wanting to build a tower even closer? If you agree to this application based on what's been presented, you're setting a bad precedent for the future. And the reason for your, your regulations and the showing that you have to meet this co-location requirement is so that you don't have these towers popping up everywhere. If you set a precedent like today, there's nothing to stop the next time from AT&amp;T or another provider to say, look, I don't like my lease on this tower, I want to build another one right next door. And in fact, AT&amp;T has been doing that across the country. This is in what I submitted, but these are in North Carolina, there's a tower built directly .25 miles from the existing tower. In Texas, they've done the same thing, right next door, less than a tenth of a mile. And this is what you're going to get, if you allow this tower to have, based on the lack of showing in your...
That meets...
It does not meet the requirements of your land development regulations. That's the whole point of the land development regulations. If it can be co-located, then it should be. If it can't, there needs to be evidence to show why it can't, and that's not in the application. So, for all those reasons, we suggest and submit that the application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have none, sir.
Who was next up to speak? Anybody else want to speak on this matter?
Bo, Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I look at this as kind of an economic development issue, more than anything else. But I'll tell you one thing, after listening to all this, I don't like attorneys. This is getting to be ridiculous.
Not as you ever.
SBA, no, I like you, Jimmy. You're, you're excluded from this. But, SBA is in business to make money. If they were really serious, they could lower their dag gum rents. But the issue before you, more than anything else, I think, is the fact CSX is a property owner in this county. They want to use their land. They have a need, because there's a gap in their coverage, they're in business to make money, too. And this is, to me, that's bottom line issue. It's a property rights issue, it's an economic development issue. Leave the, you know, SBA should not have even come into this issue at all. But they've been doing this all over the country. Do a search on SBA. As far as the towers being close, CSX, if AT&amp;T didn't come up, this wouldn't be, y'all wouldn't even be worried about it. Now, if you want to change everything around and modify the land use regulations, so you can't put a tower within 15 miles of another one, or something along those lines, y'all have at it, but I think you'd be making a big mistake. Leave the private sector alone, we don't need any more government regulations.
Thank you, Mr. ...
I would urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bo. Anybody else wish, Mr. Clepper, name and address for the...
Moses Klepper, 14581, 106th Ave., I like the idea of more coverage, I, I may repeat some here, forgive me if I do, but the, my, my main concern is, is the eye pollution. Going all the way back to the first time I got in one of these podiums in front of y'all, I talked about the control growth, you know, and I've watched communities get undesirable, because there, there's no concern about appearance, aesthetics, and, and so that's my main focus. I don't like the, the president tower having a monopoly, I don't like monopolies. I think it hurts us as citizens in general. I, I, I'm, a lot of ignorance on my part on this, but I could foresee, I agree with Andy, I, I believe that if y'all let them have this 266-foot tower, that the other tower is going to go away, you know, because of the ordinance and all. What I see here is a great opportunity for y'all to take advantage of these technicalities that the other lawyer presented, put a delay on this, get, get Mr. Brevett at work, and figure out a way to change that ordinance, where it's a economic plan, like, or a, a plan that protects the appearance of our county, you know. I, I believe, again, I admit ignorance, but I believe a 200-foot tower will accomplish what they're saying. Last time we met, Andy stated that, that physics didn't allow an alteration from the 266-foot tower. Everything I read, and I don't have all the informations that, that's available to him, or from CSX, but everything I read, the average in this area is a 200-foot tower, 50 to 200 foot, and they didn't even, so I'm pushing back to the, of course, the, the camouflage monopole. There's a, a tower that y'all pulled off the agenda last meeting, that they're applying for a 210-foot monopole. Andy said that they can't go over 200 foot with a monopole. So, right there, there's a conflict of, of truth, all right? Now, I know 210 ain't 266, but I'm not certain that there's a need for a 266-foot tower. Does CSX want one? Can they probably make more income having a 260? Probably so. I also know, and I, I sent out some information, that a camouflage tire is about three times the cost to the builder of, of the guy wire tire. And, and I'm certain that's why it's, I'm sure it's dollars that Mr. Andy's company is, is wanting to build this 260-foot tower. I, I don't think any of them are real concerned about us here, that they're here in this county, on what we have to look at, the eyesores, you know. So, the, I, I didn't see or hear the date on that outreach letter that was supposedly from AT&amp;T. Do y'all have copies of that letter? Did he give y'all copies of that letter? Please, okay, please look at the date on that. And again, I, I, we have a technicality, the second, the president tower owner's lawyer stated that according to the, to the rules here in the county, that there's no proven need for this new tire. So, y'all, I'm hearing that y'all got an opportunity to, to go into those ordinance, that ordinance, and make it where, if they want to put a tire up in here, they'll put it in there where it's not as much of an eyesore. And I, I don't really want to see one monopoly changing over to another monopoly. I don't think that consumers or the taxpayers win in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, we go on. At this time, we'll close up public comment, and move on to board discussion. I'm, I'm kind of like Mr. Bo, I'm a, I'm a landowner rights guy, and AT&amp;T and all that doesn't apply here. All we need to consider here, in my opinion, is, do we allow CSX to have this tower on their property or not? And that's, that's what it boils down to. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Chairman, the only thing...
The only thing I'll say is that you asked Mr. Meeks at the beginning of the meeting, which was what I was asked, does it meet all of our guidelines? Anything that's in an application process, have they met those needs? And I think your answer is yes. Getting back to a lot of discussion we had at the last meeting, and some of the things I'm hearing here tonight being presented to us, we'll kind of get off course of what the real ask is here, what the real request is. But just want to make sure we're all clear on that as we start having our discussion.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Mr. Fleming?
I, I'm going to follow suit also. I'm, I'm not here to, because I'm not attorney. Again, in the middle of the debate, as we got thrown into at our last meeting, and it caused situations that, that none of us understand. So, I, I'm just here to prove this, that. I'd rather not get into long, going out the dates, you know, who's right and who's wrong, because I don't know. You know, there's terms that, as attorneys, Bo, that you said you don't like attorneys, you say, James, if you find, I definitely don't want to get back into that again. So, I'm, I'm here just to prove that.
Any other commissioners who want to speak? First, first one.
I mean, I kind of agree with you guys. At the last meeting, I mean, I was leaning toward opposing it, but I think we kind of got lost, you know, lost in the weeds there with the tenant landlord dispute, technically probably wasn't any more business. You know, if, I mean, CSX has provided this map here, whether it's accurate or not, I don't know, but, but they say that it is, and that they, that they, you know, it will increase their coverage, put on their rail lines into their area. So, and, and they own property there to do it. So, you know, as private sector, less stuff from it is better. I mean, I kind of got to take their word for it, but... stuff from it is better. I mean, I kind of got to take their word for it, that if they're property, they need this tower, and the whole AT&amp;T, SBA thing is technically irrelevant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I agree, I agree with what the gentleman said. The thing I didn't agree with is the way it was presented at the last meeting. That's, long and the short, that's where I had a problem. That was your mistake, Mr. Andy. It's a fact. But with that being said, that's hindsight. You acknowledge that. Where we're at right here, basically, it meets the requirements. The way I see it, I'll offer a motion to approve.
And that, we got a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, and a second by Commissioner Landall, in favor of I. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item, I'm sorry, any commissioner items at this time. Moving along to item number thirteen, county attorney items, consideration of an exercised option to purchase property along one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth road. Mr. Revett?
Sir, the, the particular piece of property is a hundred-and-seventy-one acres, more or less, along the one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth thread. I was asked to go out and get an option to purchase on the particular piece of property because it looked like there could be some future county economic development there, including, you know, either commercial and industrial development associated with the catalyst site, or, or the, you know, the economic development area out there. The particular piece of property fronts along one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth street, and it, the option that we've been able to obtain on it is for fifty-three-hundred dollars per acre. If you translate that out and multiply it out, then it's about nine-hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. I will tell you, at this particular point, we have made initial inquiries to have a survey of the property, you know, performed, and to let you know that the property was surveyed earlier in the year, and the property actually came out, because it's a larger section up there, at one-hundred-and-seventy-three-point-five-eight acres. So the option price would then be adjusted up to reflect the additional acreage. So it'd be nine-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, you know, plus your typical, you know, closing costs. At this point, staff has already had two appraisals done on the property because the property we anticipated that would be, have a value of greater than five-hundred-thousand dollars. And in each case, the appraisals came back, and the option to purchase price is less than what each of the appraisals showed. So, at this particular point, I mean, I entered into the option, and the option actually expires just coming Thursday. So it asks for you to approve the exercise of that option. And then, with the exercise of the option, I would draft a contract, you know, standard real estate contract, whatever, the standard conditions of, you know, payment of costs going back and forth there, and get it to the property owner actually tomorrow. And then, final thing would be to do, because we're going to have a short timeline on this at thirty days, although we've already started some of our font, I want to make sure that you do authorize the clerk's office to go ahead and pay the sums on a short notice basis, so that we can not have any problems associated with closing time. So there's actually three different things that I would be asking you to address. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Stapleton here.
Mr. Revett, do we have those appraisals in hand?
I have copies. I don't have the full appraisals with me, but I have appraisals that the, the sheets that indicate the values as you go forward. Each of the two appraisers that we utilized were Leggett and Associates, and the Leggett and Associate came back on the preliminary one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, I mean, one-hundred-and-seventy-one acres at nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, which is a per acre price of fifty-six-hundred-and-fourteen. Again, we have the option price of fifty-three-hundred. Ms. Vivian Cersei Milton, she also did an appraisal for us on the one-hundred-and-seventy-one acres. She had a value of nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars, which is fifty-three-hundred-and-eleven dollars. Again, both appraisals of the property are, you know, in excess of what we anticipated in what the option for.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Land?
Do we have a copy of this option to purchase anywhere to be reviewed?
I thought it was going to be attached.
No, no, sir. I don't have it. Um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, with all due respect, I'm not saying I'm against this purchase, but what I am against is approving an option purchase that I haven't seen in a contract that I haven't read, I haven't seen it, um, I don't know where it's at, but it's not in here. That's my only concern. I'm not saying I'm against the parcel, but to approve a contract on the board's behalf without reading it. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Flue? Do we have time to bring it back?
You'd have to have...
Oh, you got to do it by Thursday.
You'd have to call an emergency meeting to be able to do that. If you will give me ten minutes, I'm surprised that it wasn't in the package, quite frankly, whenever I was going through it this afternoon. If you give me ten minutes, I'll run down to my office and bring your copy.
You mind?
I'd like it.
Not a bit.
Thank you.
Please do, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to just, we need to have a...
Have a recess for ten minutes.
Okay. We'll be in recess.
You got to discuss item ten anyway.
Well, we can't do it because the attorney...
Well, you can discuss all you want to without me being here.
I like the recess. Just to be said, yes.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm going to skip over that. We'll, we'll have the discussion on item number ten that was in the consented end that I skipped over. I'm sorry. Award bid and authorize county administrator to submit order with ring power for eight motor graders for public works. And I ask to put this off, and...
I got some information, too.
Commissioner, well, if you want to start, Commissioner Land, go ahead.
If you don't mind.
No, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Um, no, I just ran some numbers. We, and I appreciate Mr. Salin here. He's here in the back. I talked to him last week. He's very helpful, pretty damn taking the time to let us stick this around a little bit. I just pulled some numbers and tried to figure out, you know, with the cost of everything in the world going up, from road graders to fuel to everything. I just wanted to make sure that, I tried to make sure that we weren't giving up any equity position in our current leases. So what I did is, I asked Shannon, he's here somewhere, if he provided our current hours on the machines that we have. We do have two-one-forties currently leased, and six of the one-twenty's that are scheduled to go back. I believe that's accurate. So total of the eight graders. And asking around and checking on the different models, I think that most folks like the one-forty model better. At least our guys do. Nothing against the one-twenty, Mr. Salin, but they're heavier for our lime rock based sandy roads. They don't hop as much, so to speak, due to the weight. So they tend to be a little more favorable for what we do with that, you know, piece of equipment. We're currently paying, we're currently paying on the leases, on the one-forties, thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars annually. Our new lease rate on the one-forties is going to increase to fifty-two-thousand-four-forty-six annually. So it's a significant increase on, on the lease rate, and I get it. Now, the residual, which is the buyback at the end, I have to get an education on what some of this terminology was, but the residual is what you can buy it for at the end of the two-year lease. The residual actually didn't, didn't go up that much. Our current residual is one-sixty-five thousand for the one-forties, and the new residual is one-sixty-seven-eight for the one-forties. So the twenty-two, twenty-hundred dollar increase. I've talked to Mr. Salin about potential rates. The, the, the average, let me go back, the hours on the two-one-forties as of April the twenty-fifth, I'll call it grader number one, had seventeen-six-six, that's one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-six-six hours. Grader two had eighteen-six-one hours. I did a, so what I did is I took a, that's for twenty-four months, so I divided that, we're roughly eighteen months into that lease, so I took a, divided that by eighteen, came up with a monthly average, they're averaging ninety-eight hours a month and one-hundred-and-three hours a month, respectively. All things remain the same. Those two units should have around the twenty-four-hundred to twenty-five-hundred hour mark on those two machines when we turn them back. Yet, we may put them out there and run them up higher to get them back to the three thousand that we pay for. If we turn them in under that, we do not get a credit. However, if we go over a hundred hours, eighty hours, I mean, ring power kind of turns up blind out of that. They understand it's hard to hit that three thousand around on notice. Guys, I'm just going to kind of tell you where I'm at. I got numbers, some numbers to back it up. I, I think we need to exercise our purchase, our option purchase on the two-one-forties. We paid in thirty-nine-thousand-one-ninety-four times two, that's seventy-eight grand roughly that we paid in. If we do that again, it's going to be over, over a hundred grand, about a hundred-and-six thousand. So it's going to cost us more on those two machines the next two-year lease. Historically, I did some asking around, around folks around the county, previous employees, residents, what have you, and at one time, we leased equipment for various, various periods of time, but at one time, we were doing five-year leases for seventy-five-hundred hours. We got away from that. I don't, I mean, that was in the past. I don't know why. But my point of that was, is the machine should be good for up to seventy-five-hundred hours. If we could purchase these two one-forties and keep them on the construction crew, it's my understanding that the construction crew graders don't use them every single day like a road grader operator would do, actually grading the roads due to weather. Mr. Harris might can elaborate. I mean, you know, they got materials, they got, there's reasons why that machine's not working every single day. We could purchase those, keep them on the construction crew, where their hourly rate, the monthly average won't be as high. I think that's something that we should consider, since we're in a pretty good equity position. We leased it two years ago, prior to some of these increases yet in the world and shortages. I just, I think as far as scratching our heads over and trying to make sure that we're good stewards of this money and not give up an equity position that we will, probably won't give back for two, four, four years. And to be clear, we, we lease, I got a full education on the grader if y'all want to hear it. But we lease, for the public, we're on a schedule. We currently, and Mr. Harris, if I misspeak, please correct me. We currently have fourteen total. We lease six one-year. Some of them are one-twenty's and one-forties. We lease eight following years. So every year, one year we have six going back, the next year we have eight going back. They're all on two-year leases, fifteen-hundred hours a year, three thousand hours total. So that's, that's the lease that we're doing. This lease is the eight-year cycle, or the eight-unit cycle. Two of those units are the one-forties. I mean, if y'all want to ask questions, I got them. I don't want to keep sitting up here rambling on them, but I think that we need to look at purchasing the two-one-forties, because I think, personally, I think we're in a pretty good spot with those. We paid in, you know, whatever that number was, I said it earlier. That number's going to double.
Fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that number's going to double next year for those same two units, roughly double. The residual's going to stay basically the same. But on the interest rates, ring power offered four percent on used, I believe, if we chose to finance them, twenty-four months, four percent. And I believe, I wrote down thirty-six months at four-point-four, Mr. Salin, if I'm wrong. Four-point-four on thirty-six months if we needed to finance. On the new machines, if the board so chooses to purchase any one-forties new, and those numbers are on the sheet that we were given, the actual purchase price, brand new, for the public's purchase is two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-one-forty-seven. So call it two-sixty-one for a new one-forty outright, no lease. New equipment, if you purchase it thirty-six months, three percent. Forty-eight months, three percent. So new versus used, the difference in the rate. Now, I answer any question. That's what I got. Everyone else obviously has their opinion, but that's the research that I did.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Only because I didn't write it down on my work. I would agree that those machines on the construction crew are going to run fewer hours. My question had to do with, because we've got all the information on the new ones, what was the balance to be paid off when we were purchasing those?
The, the card residual, one-sixty, one-sixty-five.
One-sixty-five each.
Hundred-and-sixty-five thousand each. The new residual each is one-sixty-seven-eight-hundred. Now, I did run some FYI, and this has got to do with, there's so many factors here. I get it, it's very hard to hit three thousand hours on eight machines, three thousand hours on six, three on eight. I mean, that's like, you know, playing bingo, I guess, moving stuff all around, trying to get it even. But, I mean, we got some one-twenty's that are scheduled to go back. They're probably going to have twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred hours on them at the current rate unless we move them around. We got six months to get there. It's achievable, I'm sure. My research indicates that the one-twenty's are just a little less desirable for what we do with them. I didn't put a whole lot of thought process into buying any one-twenty's, honestly.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Mr. Stapleton?
What, so are you saying, considering buying the two-one-forties that we have, and then six additional leases on...
No, what, yes and no. I'm glad you asked. I left that out. I do think I would, I would like to purchase, I don't think we're in a position to buy six this year. I would like to see us buy these two and maybe buy two new ones at zero or three percent, put them on thirty-six AM, or we can pay them outright. I found money in the budget. We could buy them. That's up to the pleasure of the board. But personally, I would like to get away from leasing all of our units and owning some of them. But answer your question, the number that we buy, that's up to y'all if you want to buy the new ones. But I would like to see us buy those two used ones. I think we're sitting in a pretty good spot on those, personally. Has that answered your question?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Flue?
I don't know if you asked. I was just sitting here thinking about it. Did you inquire through them how much, I know we have a warranty, if you will, while we have the lease going on, how much of that, I mean, how often in those two years, and what that dollar might add up to?
No, what I did ask Mr. Salin, he's here, so I mean...
It's just how often, or what, what, so what cost would we incur, you know?
I believe the warranty on the new machines would be relatively the same as the lease on purchase versus new.
It matches the lease.
Yeah.
It matches the lease. And then, is there any manufacturer warranty, like, say, if we purchased these two current one-forties outright, is there any manufacturer warranty left beyond that three thousand hours?
There's extended warranty that you purchase.
You have to purchase.
But no manufacturer warranty left at all. Like, when you just went, like, you bought a new pickup truck, you get five years, five thou, fifty thousand miles, wherever the case may be. I'm I'm eager to store a road grader, so.
Well, you would do the total machine warranty on it to match whatever the lease period is. And then if you did decide to purchase it, obviously the lease has expired. And if you wanted to through Caterpillar, you can purchase additional extended warranty on there. You know, just like it's gonna be.
What are those run, guess, ballpark?
I, I would be totally guessing because it depends on how many years and hours per year it's involved. I mean, there's.
I understand that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fleming.
That, that's where I have, this is where I have an issue or a problem with, uh, with buying or leasing. If you lease it, you're gonna be taken care of. Once that warranty expires, then you're gonna be stuck with it. Uh, I, we had this, we talked about this one time before. You know, I, 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 my preference, I'd go to lease the machines and, you know, you cover what they're gonna come and do. Ain't nobody gonna do what they spoke of, that they're doing. Warranty run out and then we're stuck. And now you gotta go all the way again. And I think we'll, we'll back it up if we do that. Uh, also, I, uh, I'm a taxpayer. In a few months, I'm gone, but still I'm a taxpayer. But I, I would love to see this counting to where we, we have equipment. I, we've been in a situation where, uh, equipment is old and worn out. We have no, couldn't use all that machine and stuff like that. And during that time, when we start leasing, it worked, seeming was better, I think. Am I correct in saying? By leasing, I know you don't want to get in the middle of it, I won't, I won't put you in it. But I think that, uh.
I love everybody.
But I, I, permission to land, I, I, I think that, that we'll be going against the grain if we start buying new, buying out.
And, and if you don't mind, before everybody gets. And I wasn't trying to stir the pot on that, I'm just trying to get a number in my head, like, is it beneficial to purchase them? Or are we, in those first two years, how many times do you guys have to come out and do repairs? Now, granted, it's gonna be a three thousand hour machine, um, at that point in time, that obviously has been serviced well by you guys. I'm, I'm sure that, up to that point. I, I just don't know. I don't know how many times they go down. Do we have issues with them in those first two years? Are we, like possibly Mr. Fleming's saying, have we set ourselves up for some issues of, of what? I mean, I don't know.
I have a question.
Mr. Harris.
Some related to that, I can't answer your question because we've got details and they do, we're in, we've got details on our machine that would be able to answer your question. I can't answer that. I do have a question associated with going back to the lease question. You, you answered the question of how long the lease is on the leased machines because it's written in the contract. And I'm not recommending that we buy a machine, a brand-new machine. But if we were to buy a brand-new machine, what would the, um, warranty be on a brand-new purchase?
We can make it, you know, match whatever term up to five years that you want. Depending on the hours a year you can put on it.
Okay, so if we purchased a brand-new machine and it was financed through Ring Power, then you would make that lease cover that three-year term, five-year term that was financed, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
But my, my question on that, still I'm driving this point right here, is surely Ring Cat puts a manufacturer's warranty on that machine? If I was just Joe off the street, I came in to Ring Power and I bought a brand-new road grader, what's the warranty on that road grader?
The standard warranty's just a one-year warranty. But beyond that one year, you can purchase more warranty and customize it to whatever you want. If you only put five hundred hours a year on the grader, which a lot of customers do, smaller customers, we do five hundred hours a year so you're not paying for something, you're not confused by putting fifteen hundred hours a year. But the county, but the county runs the graders every, every workday, all day. And, you know, that's why the lease has been good on graders. I'm not saying there's some other equipment where you, non-grader stuff, where you don't put a lot of hours. You know, you may want to consider purchasing at the end of the lease because of the hours, so. But the, the warranties, you know, to customize, I guess, is the best way to.
Mr. Chairman.
Chris Stig.
I completely understand what the chairman is getting at because nothing in this world's free. And just like that warranty, you can customize it however you want, but it's gonna cost money. I mean, there's, without a doubt. And when that warranty runs out, it's gonna really cost money. So I'm, I mean, here's my thoughts. Purchasing the two 140s that we got, I, I could support that, absolutely. I, I don't have an issue with that. The other ones, I mean, I, I'd kind of be partial to the leasing right now, I just. And then get us a little bit further down the road and see how these other ones are doing. And then if we want to purchase them, we're in a position. I mean, I understand you are losing a little, anytime a little lease, it's gonna cost money, there's no doubt. But there's so many things that we need to spend money on and I just, I, and I, I'm not sa, I'm saying that this is a good idea with those purchased two. Then we circle back around and say, hey, let's.
Yeah, I, I was more, I'm sorry. I, I was more, my main point was I really thought that we should purchase those two used ones.
I, I, I'm, I can support that.
Buying the bullet, buying more of them was kind of like, what do y'all think? Um, you know, but I really thought that the two usuals with their current hour life, that, you know.
I, I, I could support that and I could support all 140s. I think that's a great call. Uh, obviously it's more money, but you're getting more machine for it. It's, it's kind of like, uh, anything, it's, it's gonna cost a little more for something better. I mean, there's, there's no doubt, but.
To answer that question, it, it's not a lot of money. 120s, the new lease is, uh, forty-nine thousand four ten annually for a 120. And that, that 140 lease, the new one, is fifty-two four forty-six. I mean, it is more money, but it's thirty-five hundred dollars for.
I just, I, I just think we've kind of been budgeting along and along that money. And it's what we've been spending and I mean, it's, it's kind of built into every year we do our, that's kind of what versus buying outright and, and spending.
Mr. Sandlin, on, on the, uh, the buyback, if you will, residual at the end, the cost of the grader went up significantly this time over last time, but the residual did not. Why, what's the case for that? Surely the machine's worth more as the cost goes up.
Just like every manufacturer or whatever product it is over the last half a year and a half, there's just been several big price increases. I mean, so prices have gone way up, but the value of the used value of the machine, you know, didn't go up that much. The value of the machine went up a little bit. I think one last time it was six and five, this time it was one sixty-seven, eight hundred, I think. Which, and on the lease is good, the higher the residual value, you lower the annual payment.
Right. I was just curious as to why you got the raw cost increase of a grader versus new. And my thinking, that machine's probably gonna be worth more at the end of that lease than it was before as well. But you're only, you're only got a couple thousand dollars there difference when you got a big spike in the increase of a new machine.
The, the cost of the machine has gone up like we've never seen before, you know, with everyone. But the used one, they had gone up a little bit, but it's not, keep, keep pace with the price increases.
Well, I get it, and I know you ain't got a crystal ball and. But my thinking on it is, right now, because of that fact that he's talking about, we're not really, we're gonna get this, these two machines at a pretty good deal, in my thinking, because of the residual value that's on those two machines and they don't have many hours on them. And we're gonna put them on a construction crew that doesn't use them every day like a regular road grader does. So I, I'm like the rest of you, I'm well on board to buying those two that we have, the one, the 140s.
140.
And then it's up to y'all on the, uh, I mean, it's, I guess it's up to all of us, but I'm good either way on leasing the rest of them.
And Mr. Chairman, we are gonna expect them to cut us a real good deal on the standard warranty.
That, that's, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of where I was going, because the way I understood it when I was doing my research, while we're under lease, they've honestly been really good to us. If something goes down, I think they get us a replacement or, or work with us to keep, you know, the, the jobs moving up or, so financing them and.
Yeah, but you gotta squeeze them when they factor in.
That's what I'm saying, so we, we still gonna get the same treatment. I, I agree with what Mr. Harris was saying.
But y'all don't maintain those, y'all don't, Ring Power doesn't come maintain those road graders on a daily basis, do they? In other words, breeze on the day-to-day maintenance.
No road repair work.
Just repair work. So the difference between us buying them and leasing them really just comes down to major repairs.
Right, and if you purchase them, like anything, the longer you keep them, the more the repairs go up.
But you got the warranty there to cover.
Right. But if you, you know, depending on.
But you're gonna throw that in for free because you didn't raise the residual value enough on the other one. So I'm thinking we were gonna be good on them too.
I've got sixty-five people here at Little Sixty, you can do that.
Might be top of the league.
Oh, so how do we move forward with this if we're gonna buy? I'm assuming everybody's on board for buying two? I mean, I will get to that, I'm just kind of pre-doing this a little bit so we all are clear on what's going on.
Yeah, I think we're all on board with two, buying the, those two lightly-used ones.
And this doesn't, this doesn't.
This doesn't kick in yet. We, we're way ahead.
Yeah.
We've got time to deal with this.
But we need to, well, our decision, I think, tonight is to move up to the 140s versus the one.
Which at this point would be six, that they, if you purchase those two.
Then with those two.
Yes, sir.
On the motion that we purchased two and make direct.
Second.
120s or 140s?
140s.
Make sure.
All 140s.
Thank you.
I, can I, I need to stop and ask one question before we get. The guys are all asking me, they're saying those 140s have a differential that's, they're like a full-time differential lock on those 140s. Is there a switch or something to unlock those differentials? The problem is when they go to turn them around in a short cul-de-sac or something, when those, all those rear ends are locked together, it makes it a little bit, without tearing up the road, you gotta pull forward, back up, you know, kind of thing.
They should fill it with a pocket, so we'll get, uh, let someone here might look at it and see. They, they may have a, you know.
I would figure they have a switch, like a loader, you know, you can lock it, unlock it, whatever, you know.
Yeah, that, that doesn't sound right.
Okay.
It's gonna be a button that has to do with the computer these days.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Let me just quick, Tom.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna tell you that Commissioner Fleming will be aware of this. We've come a long way on equipment. We used to have to purchase outright all of these machines. And we had a, we'd negotiate for a guaranteed buyback price. It was horrible because if that dollar, our capital died of all the time. And it took four, five years of begging and scratching and negotiating, trying to find a company that agreed to do your lease with us. And once we finally got one, it was easy enough to get all the buy-in and then they started competing with one other. But, uh, I'm convinced if we were still doing the old way, we would have the number of machines that they have today, uh, or top trucks that they have today. Anyway, this is what we're pretty well for.
And I don't disagree with you. My only reason, and I'm sure Commissioner Land's the same way and the rest of you, but it's that residual to the price increase deal that's making me want to purchase.
Well, I think we should buy these, then, market them up for sale. That's right. We might prove that we can get more money for them than what he's offering on those.
Well, obviously, that's the sweet spot on that lease number, that, that timeframe, so, yeah.
So with that being said, we're moving along here to.
Well, we need to agree to purchase the, or to lease the other two. Right, we just made a motion to purchase the two 140s.
No, he, 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 he's all.
All 140s.
All 140s.
Are, are we good under Mr. Fleming?
No, we didn't put in that motion, uh, and maybe it just comes back, the, the terms of the warranty. Well, not a certain warranty terms and financing terms and things like that.
Well, I think that's gonna come at a budget workshop.
It's coming to November.
Okay, fair enough, all right.
Are we good?
Yes, sir.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Back of, um, thirteen, we should go back.
I'll go down to the other end, Ben. I apologize that it wasn't intact, I assumed that it was. Unless we were speaking directly about it. And that's my fault for not looking at it. This is the, this is the original option. I described to you the terms, you know, earlier. And what I'm asking you is to, since I have the option, is to exercise the option.
And then we would get a contract.
Yes, sir.
And then that contract would come back before us?
No, I'm asking you to authorize you to go ahead and, and sign that. Because we gotta get, turn around and get it to them by Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes, sir. And.
Mr. Chairman.
Good thought, Sergeant Barrett.
If I could, because I'm sure the question's gonna come up, how are we gonna pay for this?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, you and I have discussed it, and I had reached out, um, to First Federal where we have a credit line with an interest rate that's at two point two eight percent. That, uh, credit line will have to be renewed because it, it tracks our CD that we have over there. There's a two percent spread between our CD interest and the credit line interest. The credit line will mature May seventh of next year, twenty twenty-three. On January, uh, January, first part of January twenty twenty-four, the loan that we've had in place for years that's associated with, uh, that property next airport out there, uh, will be paid off completely. The pledge for that loan was part of the absent sales tax. And I share that with you because if we, um, take on a loan to pay for the property, we would have to have a force of pledge against that loan. And so you're about a year and eight months away from that particular loan, uh, being paid off. Which would free up that absent sales tax as a pledge against a loan that you wanted to borrow money for five years or something of that nature. And the interim, your credit line at two point two eight percent, um, to take care of this purchase. And then it would be subject to the renewal rate in May of twenty twenty-three. And I can't tell you what the rates are right now. But I discussed that with the bank and they said that here's the benefit.
And I also, I also called the bank and went through this discussion with them as well. And it's a two point two eight percent, I think, is what it is on the credit line. And it's a two percent spread between what we've got in the CD at the bank versus the money that we're borrowing.
Will be withheld.
Yeah. So no matter what, if interest rates goes up, the two point two eight goes up, but so does our CD rate go up as well. So it's a two-point spread regardless. But my thinking, and this is, my thinking is for expediency to use the credit line here to pay for. And then the way the bank explained it to me is they just bill us for the interest every month on a monthly basis and then you can pay the principal however you so choose to do so. So my thinking is with the surplus properties that we've been selling, we would apply that money because we kind of tack that as economic development and be put in a separate line item. As those monies come in, we would apply that money to the principal of that loan for that piece of property.
What's the limit, what's the high credit limit on the line?
Three, three and a half, three and a half.
Is there a bound?
And let me just comment on this. Some of the fund balances that we carry that, like, some people may have questions on from time to time when you're looking at budget documents or funds that are available, when we are having cash flow projects. For example, we can get into a road project, it's all five million or seven million dollars. And we've got to fund that project until we get reimbursed from DOP. And we can have other grants that are going on, projects going on at the same time. So it's easy for us to have three to five million dollars out there to give them time. So if we're looking at using the credit line, then we need to be more sensitive, making sure that the balances remain in some of those funds that we've got in the budget that we use to help cash flow, um, our operations, particularly in projects, until we reimburse all, virtually, well, all of our grants, our reimbursement grants. We have to pay first, and it's quite a cumbersome process for being reimbursed, but that's the way that those are handled.
That was my thoughts on the financing, I'm open to any suggestions or ideas, or, I know that's what's not really proposed, but I'm sure the public will know, wanna know how we're gonna pay for it.
I would, go ahead, I'll go ahead, I'm still-
Commissioner Land.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Hale.
Uh, I was just, um- And how long did you say before that CD comes, that comes to term?
May 7th.
Of '23. That's when it renews, and then at that point, the interest renews at whatever the current rate is. But it's-
Before, between, and then it's gonna stay the same, like I say, with the 2%.
2%.
Yeah.
We, um, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Um, we got roughly sixty-seven thousand currently in surplus land. I'm looking at a, April 21, I'm looking at May 3rd today, I got a new green bar. Looks like we got about sixty-six thousand nine eighty-eight in surplus funds from several surplus properties. Do, do we, my question to the board is, is do we want to, to limit our interest expense when that, when that escrow balance or surplus revenue exceeds a dollar figure? Or do we wanna keep that at zero to beat down our line as much as, I mean, is, is there any thought that the board has on, I mean, we're sitting on sixty-seven at zero percent. Do we put that sixty-seven, I would, I'd put the sixty-seven thousand down today, draw the rest off of the balance. I mean, we got more surplus revenue coming at some point, but what's the pleasure of the board? Are we trying to stack this up to get to a hundred, and then apply principal payment, or do we use it as it comes? I mean, that's, that was my question.
I would say use it as it comes and limit the interest expense on it.
That's what I would do.
And, you know, that goes, you know, if you like to sell land at the catalyst side, or surplus properties, all that's economic development in my eyes, and all that money should be applied to any economic development, properties such as this that we purchased to get paid down.
I agree.
But I guess, all we need, Mr. Revat, tonight is just an approval of the option at this point?
The three items that were on the agenda item.
Yes, sir.
Included in the, but-
I didn't ask you, Mr. Land, were you comfortable with the option?
Oh, yes, sir, I just wanted to read.
Yeah, well, me too, so I'm glad you asked.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Revat, sorry inconvenience, sir, thank you.
You didn't have far to go.
Gas is four dollars a gallon, you just have to learn, five dollars a gallon, you just had to go buy it. But I appreciate it.
So the three things you needed was the approval of the option?
And an authorization to go exercise the option.
And approval to exercise.
Number one.
Okay.
Number two is then declare that, you know, purchasing the property, we've talked about the public purpose, their economic.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Just declare that it is being purchased for a public purpose, and then authorize you to be able to sign the appropriate purchase and sale agreement, which we'll do tomorrow. And then finally, not knowing what the, the timing may be on the closing of the matter, go ahead and authorize, you know, the clerk to issue and release the check to, whenever the closing-
Closing date?
Yes, sir, and it's gotta be within thirty days.
And Mr. Chairman, if that's what you're going to do, and contemplate using the credit line, is allow that to be a part of the option as well?
I would add that in as part of item number three.
Three?
Yes, sir.
Line of credit.
Line of credit from First Federal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Land.
Are we done discussing on this?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, if you-
Are we done, are we everybody good?
I'm good with it.
Well, y'all, in there-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're talking, uh, using funds currently in the surplus fund account?
Yes, sir.
Well, agenda item number fifteen, you're gonna discuss the item, the property on 112?
Yes, sir.
Two bids?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about trying to keep the rates down and do all this other stuff? Why don't you just hold off on how you're going to pay for the property?
Well, I think because we gotta do this tonight.
You gotta do that tonight, you're gonna be discussing the property on 112, do you accept one of those two bids? There's some more money that you could use for-
Yeah, that's what we just talked about, has that money accrued, so if we decide to sell, whatever that number is, then that's what we were just talking, that's what I was-
It will automatically go to that loan.
We just had a-
To apply as part of the down payment to this, so you don't have to get as much.
Or a payment if we get past that point, and we're on a payment with, with the bank for this, the balance of what we have now versus what we might have in the future, all that money from that land, surplus property, catalyst side, whatever's economic development lands that we're selling goes to the bank to pay that loan down.
I just didn't want you to sit there and think, well, you got sixty-seven thousand, you've got more property coming, it's right here on you.
Yes, sir, we just don't have it in hand yet.
And we got thirty days, I mean, that, this-
Yeah, go ahead.
This, this one, whatever it is, this 112 issue, I don't know what we're gonna decide on it, but whatever we decide, we, we may not agree to sell it. We may agree to sell it, but if we agree to sell it, we don't know that it's gonna close in thirty days like this contract is requiring, so we need to address how we're gonna pay for it today, in the event.
Well, I don't have any problems, I just didn't want you to get all that.
Yes, sir, we're gonna put it in here in just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Revat.
It's kinda like workshops.
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve recommendation, number, we need them separately, number one, approval of the option of purchase, authorized to exercise of the option of purchase. You need them individually?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Land on item number one, recommendations, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number one is approved. Item number two, do I have a motion?
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three, what, what kind of language are we gonna add there to that?
Eric, do you add it in there with regard to the CD language?
I've got it as whoever, if it's going to be done, someone's moved to authorize the finance department to issue and release a check for the purchase price and expenses with available foreclosings for the line of credit of First Federal.
Do we need to put in there with the repayment of surplus land properties?
That would be something that, not necessarily for this, I don't see that you would.
At some point, I got you.
Okay.
So, as Mr. Eric stated, do I have a motion on item number three?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
And now, Mr. Chairman, you can go ahead. Somebody can make the motion that the proceeds from sales of surplus property would be used to pay against, to bring in balance on, or principal balance on the credit line.
As number four, I just didn't want to-
Right, okay, I got you.
So, Mr. Chairman, as recommendation number four, I would move to use the surplus funds from surplus properties as they accrue as continued down payments on the First Federal line of credit.
For that, thank you.
Do the, do the word-
Right, everybody?
Good.
Motion by Commissioner Land on item number four, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sir.
And I just need you to be available tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Fleming, didn't you second that, Commissioner Fleming, that last one?
He did.
He did. So, we're at item number fifteen, discuss with possible board action offers on surplus property located on 112th Street, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, motion is, you had established, uh, an animal per acre price of seven thousand dollars an acre previously. This has been listed with Realtor, the two offers you have fall well short of that number. One offer is three thousand two hundred fifty dollars an acre, one is four thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars an acre. I just need to know what the pleasure of the board is, whether to accept one of the offers, or continue to advertise the property, bring it back. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I'm not interested in those offers. We just spent taxpayers' money at fifty-three hundred dollars an acre. I'm on prime real estate on two-page roads, so that's just my position, obviously, it's the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Oh, I have a question. It was, it was brought to my attention, and I'm not, I don't recall, so that's my question. Did we, did we actually, because I had a, I had a person, a constituent, I guess, saying that they could never find it on MLS. Did we, did we, did we bid this, or did we, was this a bid-type deal, or was this an actual listing that was, we listed it?
It's listed.
With that minimum seven thousand acre, I mean, I think that was the number that we, was it seven or sixty? Seven or sixty-five that we-
I thought it was seven thousand.
Seven thousand, seven thousand, right.
Seven thousand acre, that part I remember, and I know it's got a sign out front, it's in MLS, but I, I can't tell you if the listing actually specifies the minimum of seven thousand acre.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Stapleton on this one. I agree, I mean, we're sitting, we're sitting here looking at two appraisals, Mr. Revat just gave us at fifty-six fourteen and fifty-three eleven. Yeah, it has a structure on it, but it's also farther from town, and on a dirt road, we're on two-page roads. I kinda like to say, hey, Mr. Broker, we appreciate your offer, but you're gonna have to do better, just put it on MLS and advertise it some more, something, bring something a little better than forty-one, forty-one twenty-five, by my math, is the purchase price breaker there. These two appraisals are fifty-six fourteen and fifty-three eleven, I don't know that we'll get seven, but I believe we need to get, we need to get an order of what we got.
Mr. Chairman. And just to follow what you got, we have two appraisals on that piece of property of fifty-four hundred and fifty-two ninety-one, on the piece that's out there, so it's all in relation, but, and I don't, I don't have a problem at all selling the property, and I don't have a problem at all countering their offer, if y'all, if you wanna have discussion and come up with that. I don't wanna tell them that, no, we gonna, it's gonna be seven thousand or nothing, I, I'm, I'm, but I wanna be, I'm just saying, we're spending the people's money on one side at the same table, and not never gonna take less, that doesn't work for me.
We can ask, right?
We need to be aware of that, absolutely.
So, what's the pleasure of the board here?
I like Commissioner Stapleton's idea that maybe you can counter.
Can we do that, Mr. Revat?
The processes you're doing now, I think you'd have to reject both of them, and put it back out there again, let them, again, make another sealed bid, you know, and set a timeframe, since you've fixed, you used up your ninety-day, you know, period, set, set another one for thirty days, for this particular piece of property that can come back and have, you know, different offers that you can consider.
Yeah, need that form of motion, I'm ready.
So, I have a question. Can we, can we do what you're talking about, and how do we, since we're not gonna negotiate with this, these two offers, on the, hey, we'll put it back out, we're rejecting both of these, they didn't meet our minimum requirement, we're gonna put it back out there for thirty, but the next one we get that's the highest, A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever it is, we're gonna negotiate, we're gonna negotiate.
So you're gonna, can we change the term of how we're advertising?
So we can counter. So we can counter.
You're not, you're not gonna be able to, uh, counter back and forth with the next highest bidder. I mean, that's why, I mean, with, with the property, public property, you get the sealed bids. If you either, it's either in or you're out. Yeah, you're either in or you're out for that. One of the suggestions you may make, though, is if, to clarify and maybe get other people involved, is to remove the seven thousand dollars on it. You already know what these things may be, and you may get an offer that you are willing to accept, you know, based upon the previous appraisals that you had. Now, I mean, that's, that's Jimmy's suggestion, not Jimmy the lawyer, that's Jimmy.
So, the taxpayers.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, so that I'm clear, what you're saying is, we, what we could, the board could consider, is saying, all right, we said seven, sixty-five hundred, or sixty, whatever the number is that matter to me, sixty-five hundred, Mr. Paul, reduce our list price, because we have some information here that we've been privy to on appraisals, four of them. Put it out there, sixty-five hundred, give us some offers for thirty days, sealed bids or whatever.
Seal it, we could.
Do that?
Yes.
So I guess the first thing we need to do is have a motion to reject the two offers we have now.
Yes.
File for motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now.
All for motion for, for to redress the sixty-five hundred, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Stapleton for sixty-five hundred.
Or for thirty days.
Thirty days.
Sixty-five hundred an acre for thirty more days on sealed bids, do I have a second?
I say, Mr. Williams.
Commissioner Land, second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. I'm gonna, this is something I, I wanted to do, and I, I'm gonna pull the road project discussion for the next meeting, as there was a little time to really, for me to go over some things on there, and I got some ideas I'd like to look into before we have that discussion, so.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull item sixteen for the next meeting.
I had to beg and plead last time on this lease. You just haven't been what you're doing.
I'm the chairman, I can just pull it.
Ain't got no gamble, dude.
That's right. Any additional items, seventeen additional agenda items?
We have, we have more here.
It's listed as two, but it's actually associated.
Additional agenda item, item number one, approval of modification number one to sub grant agreement number F-0023 between Division of Emergency Management and Swanee County Board of County Commissioners for the Engineering and Design of Emergency Operations Center, Mr. Harris.
These items are actually the same item, we've got a grant that is about to expire on design work for a new VOC. It, uh, previous employee took a different job at the VOC, they went someplace else, and I guess this thing got lost over there. So, more recently, in a conversation with Sheriff, he went back over there, they found it, and it needs to be extended. So, someone signed it, sent it in to be extended, that signature was rejected, because it doesn't qualify, it didn't qualify the signature. So, this is a request to authorize me to sign all the documents associated with modification, which is actually an extension of time, I would have the engineering design work.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stapleton, I forgot, I'm sorry, you have one?
You're fine. Oh, this is simple, I just, I wanted to have clarification, Mr. Harris, that when it comes to the design and engineering on it, that we include the sheriff and his people on the, the design of it, and let him have input, that's, that's really all I had.
Yes, I, that's all we're probably, yeah.
Yeah, that. Yeah, that's all we would ask, is, you know, we, obviously, you know, we, myself and the deputy director of the, you see, Mr. Chris Bolts, we wanna have the input about, you know, how, you know, how it's laid out and structured and so forth, and just want some input on that there, you know, since, that definitely got some ideas of how we wanted it laid out and so forth, we just wanna have some input, once we get to that point.
out and so forth, we just want to have some input once we get to that point.
I thought I was going to get to make that decision myself.
You can help.
We need a motion on that.
Are they individual?
Are they individual, or?
I think one motion is sufficient to cover both of them, because it's really modification is what you're approving, you may authorize about signature on modification, but that's the only other thing that's impacted us.
And then we need to put any language in there by input by the sheriff?
No.
I mean, they obviously...
Guess it's only minutes, ain't it?
Mr. Chairman, all of approval of modification and adoption of the resolution.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor. I'm sorry, you don't want to be quicker now.
I'm trying. I guess got a question. Any good as directly back to what the previous commissioners have done, or commissions? There's money appropriated every budget year for projects that never, ever get done. This grant was received in 2019. Why in the heck are you now going back with an extension? You had three years. Why does it take so long? And don't just say it's just because it's government.
I could answer the question.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Two of you weren't.
I can answer the question if you really want to answer that.
Yes, I would like an answer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stevens, are we prepared?
Well, this grant was actually set up, the name that was on the grant, this grant administrator, was someone that was employed at the VOC at the time. So, that person set themselves up as the administrator of the grant. And when that person left, this grant set over there at the VOC, I don't know where it was, didn't know anything about it, until the sheriff came to see me, two and a half months ago, maybe?
Yes.
To see if he could have some input in the design of the VOC. I said, well, we're not involved in any design of the VOC, and we started searching. And I had Shannon, while the sheriff and I were in the office talking, I asked Shannon, I said, can you get online and see if you can find out what the status is of this particular grant? That's when he discovered whose name was on there, this employee that was no longer there, that had left. So, more recently, someone over there tried to handle this extension by signing a form and sending it in. It was rejected, I had Shannon checking on it, it was rejected, unacceptable signature. So, Shannon asked him if we could go ahead and get the authorization changed on the administrator of this particular grant, which is for design only. They agreed, and that's why we're going through this exercise, to give the extension of time necessary to procure the engineering services and have the design done. Now, all of that to be said, so that I can say that some of the grants, that, and this is something that's been changing here just the last couple of years, for years you could not procure the services of anyone and do any engineering work on a building prior to the time that you actually had the grant for the funding in place to build the building. You just didn't do it. They didn't allow any of that. In my mind, this is kind of unique, where they're now funding the engineering piece of this under one grant in preparation of the local government trying to find funding to actually build the facility. Apparently, more of them are now looking at providing more points if you've already actually got your design done, you can provide an engineer that's probably the cost. We found this recently with the five million dollar grant that we were awarded, we actually got extra points on that when we went ahead and selected the engineer and the granted third-party administrator. No work was done, but we had to go through the process quickly and make the selection, and we got extra points for that. What they're telling us is that some of these grants in the future will potentially offer extra points on your application for a grant if you already have the engineering in place. It's different. It's something that we're seeing here just more recently, the last couple of years. So, that's how it came about that this is being extended now. The person hasn't been employed over there for, I guess, an extended period of time.
This is kind of frustrating on my point, taxpayer standpoint. Four or five years ago, when, before the Douglas Center was demolished, there was talk about the VOC and the need for a new VOC and all of that, because that building needed a lot of maintenance. And Mr. Durham appeared several times and discussed the problems that they were having at that facility. And so, the decision then was made to go out, see if you could get a grant to replace that.
And I think we've applied for several, haven't we not?
We've applied for multiple grants, and we've requested state appropriations as well, and nothing has been awarded so far. In fact, we've got a grant application out right now. So, I don't know when we will actually be awarded the funding for that purpose. We've certified many times. This is one step. We can get the design piece of it out of the way, that's great.
But this still gets back to the point I'm trying to make, and not very well, evidently. Where is the oversight? Who, once y'all decide to do something, you're spending money, you're encumbering funds, whose responsibility does it become at that point to see that something's actually done? Who does it?
If it's a grant, there are lots of...
Any money, any monies that the county has, you're spending monies, you're encumbering funds. Who's in charge? Who's responsible? Who's accountable?
I ask questions all the time about, have we got this done, or have we got that done, or we budgeted this, we getting on it?
We, the public, don't hear all of that.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you talking about, like, items stacking up in the budget, or let's just say we allocate? I don't know.
Okay, exhibition two, you got fifty, or did have fifty thousand dollars sitting over there. Greg's applied for a grant, if he gets that grant, along with that fifty thousand, exhibition two might get done, but it's been in the budget for five, six years. That money could have been spent somewhere.
Mr. Harris.
You're right, it should have been spent someplace else. That's the simple answer. The reality is, it was never a number-one priority of the board, they had lots of priorities, many of which were associated with economic development and other projects, but in a particular case, that building, that is a substandard building, and it was the day that it was built. So, previous boards put the money aside. I think that it would at best have been an escrow that would have needed to continue to be added to and added to and added to, but if we could get a grant to build a real building instead of that converted, harmed building that was there, we'd be better off long-term. So, that money hasn't been spent on that building because there hasn't ever been sufficient money there to do the building, do it right. And I can speak to the previous commissioners.
Process for that bill, or that you applied for. Have you heard anything?
Signature on probably governor.
I'm sorry.
Waiting on the governor's signature.
Okay. Now, what are you going to do? He gets the grant, you going to take that money and add it to it to build a building? Somebody's got to decide, folks.
I plan on moving it to the fifth district, I saw you on there.
Anyway, see, I'm frustrated.
I understand.
Y'all do it every year, or y'all have it, but, well, you have one year.
Year and over.
No, you already been through one budget session. Y'all set budget, and y'all put that fifty thousand and kept it there. And that's not the only one.
Mr. Chairman. I speak to Mr. Bowe, I feel pretty confident he's speaking to me on a lot of these things because he says y'all haven't been there, and obviously, we've been there. But, Mr. Bowe, I appreciate your frustrations, I do, and I understand all the projects, but there's one thing about that money. That money's the taxpayers' money, and if it hasn't been spent, that means it's still there. And from now on, that's our job, is to make sure that money doesn't get wasted. I completely understand your frustration, but I'm frustrated too. I am. There's plenty of things I want to get done, but there's not enough money to do it. And if Greg Scott picks up the phone and calls me and says, hey, Commissioner Stapleton, he won't say that, he'll say, hey, Lynn, because if we got a relationship like that, and he says I need some help, I'm going to make this happen, I'm going to say, Greg Scott, let's get it done, just like that, that's how it's going to happen, on my part. Now, obviously, it's a board decision, but at some point in time, I'm going to stand up for myself, and you're going to attack, 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 and nobody stands up, nobody says anything, and you keep coming. So, I'm going to be respectful and answer your questions.
I appreciate it. Still not happy.
Well, I understand that, but to sit there and insinuate that nobody's done anything on this board when there's economic development going crazy everywhere in this county, it's boiling wide open.
Where's the oversight?
This county's in the best shape it's been in many, many years, if ever. There's money we got coming in, we have, we're able to do things, accomplish things. We're getting out of problems that we had out there at the airport, where mistakes was made by good people, mistakes were made by good people, but we have to pay for them, the taxpayers have to pay for them, millions and millions of dollars. We're slowly digging our way out of it, and I'm proud to be part of this board right here and fight every day.
Good. Don't have a problem with that. But where's the oversight?
The oversight's right here.
It is, and to add to that, I mean, and I know I stepped out just when you figured out that, but I was hearing what you were saying, I was stepping out real quick, but we typically, and I'm not putting the pressure on any department head at all, but we don't sit up here and make those decisions. Those folks bring it to us, say, hey, this is what we think we need to do, and we let them prioritize that. If that was really something that needed to be pushed, and someone came to me, tell us what you said, and say, hey, it's time for us to do something, get this done, they may have bigger plans. I don't know what Mr. Scott's plans are out there, he may want to, like Mr. Harris said, hold off for something bigger and better. I don't know. I mean, it hasn't been a high priority, I do agree with that, and that we had the money, like one of y'all stated, to even finish the project or to do it correctly, so, I mean, I want to do it right. We're going to spend the money, I do want it to be right.
So, Mr. Bowe, I just want to understand something here. Do you have a problem with us escrowing money to complete a certain project, like we're adding safety?
No, if you ever do it.
Well, I mean, you got to get to that finish line.
Five or six years is ridiculous.
Well, I mean, if you only got, I want you to explain to me, if I only got fifty grand to put in there every year, and it's going to take five hundred thousand dollars to do the project, what do you want me to do? You want me to borrow the money? Or are you going to save it up to like...
Then, if you knew what it was going to cost to replace that facility, then you should have been adding money every year. But you leave, you roll fifty thousand dollars over every year, and you've done it for five years.
I understand that.
Now, if you would have, or if the commission had budgeted fifty thousand and added it to it, you'd have over quarter million dollars right now.
Yes, sir, but we still wouldn't have enough money to do the whole thing.
Look, we don't know. We don't, I've never seen anything at all on what it's going to take to replace that building or to fix that building.
I think, well, that's why I'm asking you these questions, I want to get to the heart of the problem here, and I see where you're coming from now. You're saying if we're going to sit here and escrow money into an account for a specific project, you would like to know what that project is and how much you think it's going to cost and where the goal is to get to that project.
Yeah. Plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to be...
Mr. Lynn, hold on just a minute.
Mr. Bowe, I mean, I don't disagree with you that sometimes we lose sight, but things come up, things change, and I know all these guys got other jobs to do outside of this. I mean, you know, I mean, I put in eight, twelve hours a day at my other job, and I put in, some days, today, three hours with Mr. Norris, meeting about a project that we got to end day EA with that I can't talk to you about. But when you find out about it, if it gets here, it's going to be big. I can't talk to you about it because it could expose...
There's confidentiality agreements, I understand it, it's the economic about, that's not my issue.
But that doesn't mean I'm not working, working my, you know, what off, some days, today is one of those days. I mean, that doesn't mean I'm not fighting, and I'm not, there's things that I do that, and Mr. Blue's here, he's on Development Authority, there's things that happen that you can't talk about. I see what you're saying about the escrow, and sometimes this year, that may have been our number twenty project, something happens, and it might get shuffled down to twenty-five because we needed more money or funds at number three to get that done. I mean, it's just hard to sit here and say, it's my first year, I mean, I'm still learning, I'm learning every day, but I do try to follow the money, and I see, I do see what you're saying, but it's just hard to keep up with it every single day, every single meeting. I mean, I'll be happy to address any of your concerns if you give me a little bit of heads up, because I don't have it right here, I have to go to the department head, and maybe that's something, I mean, I know all of our department heads, most, all of them that I deal with have an open-door policy, you got a question, call them. I think Mr. Harris will attest to that. I mean, it's your money, it ain't my money, it's everybody's money, so if there's questions that we can't answer, you can't get one of us, I would encourage you to try to develop some relationships with some of our department heads. They're doing it every day, all day, and most of them have it readily available to answer, where I might have to dig a little bit or make some calls, so.
Department heads used to stand up here at the podium and give a report.
And I'd like to get back to that.
Yeah, but, you know, not all of them, you know, had a whole lot to say, but they were available.
No.
And you don't do that. Now, as Joe Low citizens sitting out there, there's five of y'all, plus Mr. Harris, I don't think I could call the attorney, but then there's your department.
No, don't call him, he'll charge us.
Charge the county. But y'all, like you say, y'all are busy. This is the forum that's allowed the public to address this publicly, and I'm not getting up here to grandstand. I would rather come up and ask a question of you or whatever's going on individually, but the public then doesn't benefit, because I ask the question of one of you or Mr. Harris, can I get an answer?
I'd say...
The public didn't get that answer.
And I don't have a problem with you standing there asking the question, I really don't.
Absolutely.
And I'm not doing it to grandstand, folks. I'm concerned about the county, and I agree that things are getting better, but each one of you chose to run. When I talked with Lynn before he ran, I asked him, and I won't use the same language, but basically, why are you running? And he, his answer was, he wanted to give back to the community. Correct?
I feel like I've done that.
You have.
I'll be fair.
And I don't have any issues with that, but y'all chose to run.
Nobody, I don't think...
Mr. Chairman.
Sir, go ahead.
I don't think, I don't believe there's one person up here that's got a problem with, while they're here. I mean, we just have a difference of opinion of kind of the way you present, or I do, I'm saying, the way you present something, you come on the attack, and if I speak up, then I'm being disrespectful to you, and I just feel like that's...
I'm not attacking anybody. I want an answer. That's when I get up here, I want an answer. Period. It's like the workshops, eventually, we'll get to them, maybe.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowe.
Mr. Chairman, can we finish the vote?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're on the additional items. Do I have a motion, or did we have a stop?
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Stapleton, we just need a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Just hit seventeen, sir.
Additional agenda items, we just, so we do public, public concerns and comments, I think, Mr. Bowe, you done had your minute, so you ain't getting no more.
My turn.
I think you went well over thirty.
No, sir, that's incorrect. On any agenda item, there is no time limit. Public comments is.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, so.
Name and address for the record.
Wayne Hanaco, 11883 Ninety-third Road. I just want to bring something up that I feel needs to be closed, and we're not getting to the end of it. A while ago...
A while ago, y'all heard me talk about internet cafes, you did what I asked, you shut them down, you got them moved out. We did an ordinance, the ordinance doesn't do much. And you got rid of them, and then the city got rid of them. And I was told, we'll just wait for the city to pass their final ordinance before we pass ours to ban. That has not happened. The city passed theirs in February. I was told first meeting in April, then it was this meeting, and it's still not on the agenda. Then I...
I might just respond to that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Boe.
I'll tell you and tell the board, it is my fault. The language that we've gone through has been, I've gone through it, and the timing on be able to get it here for this meeting, I thought I would be able to get that in and get it advertised appropriately to be able to hear. But we've heard, we've had a busy last six weeks, and it is all on me. I did not get the advertisement in, in time to be able to have that addressed here. It will be, quite frankly, as soon as I can get it done, it will be placed on the agenda. But I want you to know that, and the board to know, that that one's on me.
Fair enough.
We'll get it done.
We'll get to an end of it before they come back.
Yes, sir.
I think I'll speak for the board, I think our feelings haven't changed.
Yes, sir.
That was it? Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanico. Anybody else wishing to speak? If not, we'll move on. Administrator comments, Mr. Harris.
I just gotta say briefly, what happens in county government, and I think all these commissioners at that degree, isn't happening here. This is where the policy decisions are made between here and your budget workshops. But there is an incredible amount of activity that goes on with all of these commissioners. And I talk to commissioners, I'm emailing back and forth with them, protecting them, trying to move things all the time. County staff and every department is running wide open all day, every day. And I think these commissioners could attest that particularly the last probably six to eight weeks, all of us have been running harder than, and the county attorney as well, than we were two years ago, three years ago. We've got some really exciting things going on, and I'm sure the commissioner can wait for some of those things to materialize, but it's been taking a tremendous amount of effort, lots of time and participation by the commissioners and their various little pieces of things that are going on and working with department heads to make things happen. So, all that to say that no one wants to hear that someone out in public is frustrated. There's a lot going on, but there's a tremendous amount that you can't even discuss. Other things you can see, you know, we've got far more service delivery today in probably all of our departments than we did three, five years ago. Question, I mean, one example was the equipment we were talking about before. Twelve years ago, we had five, pretty close to antique dump trucks. Every day, three of those were parked at the shop, which meant three dump truck drivers were riding on the patch truck. And that was normal in those days. And I think at that time, the best equipment we had was our graders, and I think we had nine or ten. Today, we have fourteen. That number is correct. We were trying to dig limestone out of a mine with an excavator, underwater rock. You don't do that with an excavator. We all ragged drag lines, and it's been doing a tremendous job for us.
You said brief.
Brief. I could go on and talk about all of our departments and what a tremendous job they're doing and how they're making things happen, if we just did not have the ability to make happen previously. So I don't want to be frustrated, but I want you to understand that there's nothing going on, and things are a whole lot better here today than they were ten years ago, twelve years ago. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
I'm Mr. Jim, and I, I would be brief, I think. I'm thinking that there has been a lot of improvement since I've been on this board the last twelve years. Saw a lot of changes, a lot of great changes, both of them, as Mr. Harris was saying about, we used to go down to the mines and it was dangerous. We got operated, trying to dig limestone on a pit, and we had a discussion, and I told my employees, no one get hurt. I feel like any, any bitch who go to work, go to work, his intentions coming back home. That's what I do, try to do every night. When I leave, I try to come back to my family, I want to come back to my family. But that was dangerous. As you said, those ragged dump trucks that we had, boy equipment, motor grader sometimes break down, don't have anything to do, and trying to make sure. But I understand some frustration. I get it all the time, not only here, but from my family. My family complains about roads ain't paid, not paid. My siblings, come from a very large family, five boys and five girls, and they got children. And I hear it all the time. And I have to go toe to toe with them sometime, and sometime I have to make them shut up. But because simply they don't understand that how county government works. You don't just go out and pave a road. You don't go out and just build a road, it costs money to have that stuff done. If you ain't got the money, you can't do it. And then it's, and then we start raising taxes, and they say, the tax is too high. You'll never please anybody, everybody. I sit sometime quietly and I'll say this, and I want, I would love to thank Commissioner Land for the district, pre-area, that work that you had done. I really appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. And I see public works out there trying to get the road straight so that we can ride on that road without anybody getting injured. But I have family in the Weldon area, I have a lot of family in the Weldon area, in Tacoma They called me and gave the number, their commissioner, gave the number to them, I don't know if you received any calls or not, but they were so thankful for, they operate out digging ditches on Lake Jeffrely Road. I told them that's District Four, Commissioner Stapleton's district.
Was that Mr. Boe that called?
No. It was my family from Columbia County, Columbia, Swan County line, and then individuals from the Weldon area. It was complimenting the work that this county does. We have some of the greatest workers and staff, our personnel, technical director, parks and rec directors, that, that very, they get the job done. And that makes me happy on the inside. As I said earlier, I'm not boasting about leaving, but I feel like my time is up. And there'll be, in three months, there'll be a new commissioner sitting, yes, our chief. And we, I'll be attending these meetings.
And possibly me. Because you'll be in Indiania.
No, 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 I have a very great, very great payroll. And I'll be trying to keep that road clean, which I'm not out there yet, but try to keep it nice. But I really appreciate these guys and the chairman, I, you know, sometime I visit the Branford area, I'm in District One. But every district I'm riding, I got family in every district. As I said, I have a very large family. And I frequent every district in this county, and I have this county at heart, I love Swan County. I wish all my kids could live here, stay here. But we don't have any jobs that our family can, you know, my children cannot stay here, therefore they have to go and get a warrant, get a visa, a license. So if we can, just more jobs created and see the grants stand in this area. So Mr. Chairman, since you've been here...
I'm fixing to.
I'm gonna stop. I told y'all it's gonna be brief. Thank you so much.
You can to Jimmy Norris.
You been hanging out with Jimmy.
That's a good...
Mr. Stapleton.
We family.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really know where to begin here, but I'm gonna just say, I'll see my mom out there. I'm gonna apologize on my delivery and my thoughts. But the one thing I'll thank her for is the passion and the love that I got Swan County, is all I got.
Very well said.
Amen.
Mr. Lynn?
I'm gonna keep it real brief, I'm good. I've been burning the candle a couple days since way before daylight, and I'm ready to go home. I love everybody.
Here I hope you out, Mr. Hill.
I'm gonna make it quick too, and everyone, we say this and every mean, but I really want you guys to understand it. We, you're right, Mr. Boe, we ran for these positions, we signed up for these long hours, these long meetings, and the hard conversations and all that, and I think I agree with everybody, we're proud of what we accomplished, we want to keep working towards that. Got folks like Mr. Moses has moved in here, and he reminds me all the time about responsible growth, I appreciate that. But we do have some unique opportunities going on right in Swan County, and since I've been on the board, two different boards, like you mentioned, different folks, different personalities, and somehow we figured it out, all worked together for the common goal and the common good of Swan County, and I'm just most proud of that, I'll just say that. Commissioner Fleming, you talk about all these different districts, and he's right, guys, he knows everybody. There is not anyone, because I get calls all the time, and they say, Mr. Fleming gave me your number, said to call you. And there are people in my district, and, but we, one we didn't mention, and I don't know why it came to mind, but I do want to mention them, we had a mutual friend, Lucky Leroy, if you remember him, and he had passed on us, and I don't know that we mentioned that, but I want to mention his name, just hearing you talk about family and things like that, just lost someone in my district who was a good person. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. This past week, we had Mr. Norris put on an economic development workshop type thing that Chad, Chancellor of Next Move, came to, and I thank Commissioner Lynn, you attended, and myself, and very informative, very, it opened my eyes to a lot of things that maybe we're not doing, that we could be doing, areas of finance to, for economic development, the ways to go. You see other counties do things, and you wonder, how do they get that done? Well, this guy, he had the answers. I mean, he, and I asked him several things and wrote down a lot, and it all had to do with economic development, and I just want to say, it was what, thirty-five, thirty-four?
Yes, sir.
People attended, different areas of the county banks, I don't remember all of them that was there, Chamber of Commerce.
City.
City. But it was real informative, and I want to thank Mr. Norris for putting that on, it was, didn't you, who paid for that, Jimmy?
It was a grant through NFDP that brought in the Next Move group to help small and rural communities in development. So a regional organization that you guys, you know, fund, for us to be a part of, sponsored that.
But I just wanted to mention that, and what a great thing it was, and how informative it was for me, and most everybody I talked to was just, you know, ecstatic about it, that it was so good. But I'll keep it short, I just want to thank this board. We don't have knockdown dragouts, I ain't saying we won't have one sometime, but you can watch some other counties go at this, and it gets pretty brutal sometimes. So I just want to thank everybody for having a civil tongue and getting along and getting the job done. With that, I just need a motion to... Motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor of I?
Aye.